Okay.
We have the order.
I plug in the to the flag. I did nice. It's so better and we call like where it stands. One eight underground.
All right. Well, go ahead and roll call, please.
President down.
Here.
Vice President.
Here.
Treasure being.
Here.
Secretary Prince.
Here.
Trusty Thomas.
Yes.
Trusty Zimmerman.
Present.
And trustee with the word.
Present. Okay, any public comments?
We need a motion for remote participation.
Oh, that's right.
I make a motion to allow Vice President Everard to attend remotely through electronic participation as per administrative policy. Number two point zero four point zero two, the basis for the missing meeting is for health.
Okay, you can do the second, please. Yeah.
And trustee Wesor.
Oh, yeah.
Trusty Zimmerman.
Yes.
Trusty Thomas.
Yes.
Secretary Prince.
Yes.
Treasure being.
Yes.
Vice President Everard.
Yes.
And President Down.
Yes.
Motion packed.
Thank you.
Motion carries. How are you feeling?
Uh, no. The meds are kicking in, so that's helping, but I don't want to, don't want to give anybody else sick, so I figured it best to stay home.
Good, I appreciate that. Everybody else looks good, yeah, good. All right, now we can go on to public comments. Is everybody out there?
There is not.
Okay. We'll move on then to new business. And we want to review of the regular meeting agenda. For Tuesday's meeting. I think I want to hold from the consent, the twelve point nine A. And like, I have a little discussion about that. Which one's that? And it's the field with. Anybody else have anything?
I got one. How about the, what the Buffalo one? About the, uh, forty thousand dollars. And our grant, then we're going to expand the device and program.
Twelve point seven?
Yeah, twelve point seven.
Okay, anybody else? Good.
Can we discuss those and then we'll see, do we need to move them, you know, with the motion?
Right.
Yeah, they consent and we can move them on Tuesday night, but if we resolve or we get questions answered, it's up.
We can leave mine there, yeah, that's correct. Uh, let's do twelve point seven then first. Which is.
The IDNR Habitat Grant. Bison grazing.
Okay, yeah, resolution twenty-three dash sixty-five. Resolution partnering with the McHenry County Conservation Foundation and supporting the grant applications submitted to the. Federal Department of Natural Resources. Uh, and the old habitat fund in the amount of forty thousand to assist in the funding. Uh, the expansion of the Pleasant Valley Conservation Area Bison. Uh, grazing project.
What, Pat, where, so my question is, I never remember us talking about expanding that. What is that, what? What's, what are we gonna do?
I believe this grant is to fence the area that we sowed down in Perry already. That was going to be part of the original lease.
Cause they, they did, they did some and then. Then they paid for some of it.
Yeah, they paid for some of it and we're hoping this grant will deprive the cost for most of the rest.
And the only reason why we go after is because there's a chance for the grant.
Yeah.
Right, right, I understand that, yeah. So then we gotta kick in some too, or just? We gotta, the conservation districts gotta kick in some too then, or what?
We do, but a lot of what we kick in will be in time as opposed to, there'll be some cash, but the multiple will be in time. How much bigger will it be? Uh, I don't have the acre to find it, I couldn't find that for you though.
It was additional seven thousand linocry of woolen wire fence. And it looked as if, it says, uh, the project rise by some regular expansion. Uh, adjacent to thirty acres.
Nine, it's ninety acres.
Ninety.
Also, it's ninety acres more.
Yeah, and that's, that's about what we sow down in Perry. Plus, plus some grass metal that was part of that.
And that's all adjacent.
Yeah, it's all adjacent.
Well, then they'll, they'll put more buffalo in there then.
Yeah.
Okay, anybody have a problem with that, or can we read our management agenda, or? We'll either take it off and we'll discuss more or, uh, separately. Everybody, everybody's good with it?
Yeah.
All right, thanks, Pat. Good, uh, we'll move on to twelve point nine A, which is the, uh, resolution of worrying, uh, contract to Blue Petroleum and Mondele. Those responsible, uh, and responsible bidder for unleaded and equal fuels. I guess, uh, Perry, I mean. Don't, uh, need it. I'm at you, but I, I just don't understand. And I guess I haven't understood for the last three years that I've been on the board. How that really is, uh, advantageous to the district, the way we've been it.
Well, for fuel for the diesel.
Yeah, I mean, I see the propane, we lock in a price and we're in good shape and yeah, we're, we're, we're at, so, yeah.
You know, with the, with the. With the. The volatility of the market, those prices fluctuating daily.
Oh, absolutely.
So therefore, that's the way the market is and the industry standard is the well's bid, that you get the oldest price. Or that day that the fuel's being delivered. So you pay for that marketed price, whatever that may be set for that day.
The day you call to get a delivery?
Yes, the day that the fuel's delivered.
Yeah.
You get an oldest report. And then it's that profit and margin for delivering that product, which is around thirty or thirty-two cents per gallon.
Right, right.
Propane's different, it's not as volatile. And in the past, we've actually had vendors, like our current vendor, AmeriGas. Actually request us. To, to, to set that contract similar to. What we do with the unleaded diesel fuel, but propane isn't as volatile, it's not like a daily oldest report they receive for that, for that product.
Right. Well, back when I had, uh, a lot of trucks and the trucking business, we used to hedge in contract fuel and stuff too. But we would lock in a certain price, cause I, I just can't, it, let's just say it's three dollars today, but tomorrow might go up to four fifty because something happened and. We're not locking it in, all we are is getting that price that morning.
You're right, it could go either way, it could go up, it could go down, or the district would lose substantially too, so.
Well.
And the vendors, I don't think they would want to commit on that because they can potentially lose money by delivering our fuel, you know.
No, they're, I see, I did, I disagree with you a hundred percent because you can, you can go and contract fuel any way you want. You can, you can contract fuel, um, six months from now.
See, I want to lock it if I ever get a.
A lot of times you can do it price, you can lock a price in.
Yeah, and yes, it can go down, but you know what your costs are, at least at that, for your, that year's budget. Let's say it's, uh, three dollars and twenty cents. And we do have a big oil crisis and it goes up to five dollars. We're still, the district's on the hook for paying for more expensive fuel already, cause then lock in. I just thought we could maybe look at a different way of bidding it all.
And we could, I think John can extend on that, could it reach out to one of the other part, part agencies?
Yeah, I've got a network of, uh, Conservation District, Forest Preserve District, uh, Directors of Operations. Just to get an idea of what, what other people are doing out there. And what I found, what I got back was it's pretty much industry, it, it is the industry standard to do that. We also checked with McHenry County, um, uh, and, and to see how they're procuring their fuel and they do the exact same way. They use the office price plus, and, and the bid is basic on the delivery. Um, and that's.
So all, all the bid is doing is just giving their margin.
You got it, yeah, they, some called it.
How is that helping us? That's the only thing I, I just don't understand it, I guess.
Uh, I, I. If we could lock in at a low rate, then I think it would, you know, that, and, and, and get there, it would, it would help us. Uh, my biggest fear is getting no bids. Because we, Andy did a little research and found out that it's, it's not typical of the clients, at least Blue, uh.
Petroleum.
Blue Petroleum here to do that, they have a few clients that do that, but not, but most don't. Uh, we, we also found out that Petro Bend, who's been a, Petro Troy's has been a vendor of ours, doesn't do it. Um, and so I don't know if it's a government thing doing it that way, I.
No, I think it's each company does their own type of contracts and.
That's, that's what we found out there, we, you know, we, we, we have many times reached out to McHenry County to see how they're doing, you know, it, and that is the system they're using, so. Uh, it's been the system that, I, I think we initially got it, how do you, how do you handle bidding fuel like that? So that's, uh, what we've done in the past is what we're doing now and my, we are. We're a small fish out there, uh, somewhere around, you know, forty-seven ga, or sub forty-seven thousand gallons.
Sure.
McHenry County's bidding like, you know, two hundred, uh, two hundred and twenty-five thousand, they're having delivered to two places with, with semis. Uh, and we are, we got four small places and, and in some cases, we're eliminating some bidder simply because we can't accommodate semis. So I'm, I'm very worried that if we get a little, uh, more, you know, tricky about this, proactive, but we're trying to really narrow it down. I think if it were, if we were in a, in a cash flow situation where, you know, we want to lock that kind of stuff, and so we knew we were controlling those things. That's not where this agency really is, I'm, I'm worried about getting no bids.
Well, maybe we don't need this, maybe we need to just, that day when you fuel, call up. Four different, uh, fuel suppliers and say, what, what are you charging that day?
Yeah, and then.
I mean, I don't, I'm just throwing ideas, and it's something we don't have to come across tonight, but maybe we can look into a little bit more and.
And I'm not sure how that would work for bidding, you know, um, I know that anything over thirty, twenty-five, our, our rule is anything over twenty-five thousand, so. We start spending more than twenty-five, twenty-five thousand dollars with a. Someone's gonna turn around and say, hey, why are you not bidding that?
Right, I got it, yeah.
So, yeah, it's a little, and, and that would be. That, that'd be very time consuming, um, not only that, I mean, when we set or establish a vendor. We have to go and give them the combinations to the, to, so that they can, you know, open up the, and fill and, and.
Sure.
And train them where they all are, and, and that is, that is no small task, that takes some time and, and that whole training thing. Um, we've had some work out really well, we've had some not work out so well, you know, vendors, so.
Okay.
Yeah, right. Are there, is there any potential for maybe in the future to combine our? Our needs with McHenry County, so we can maybe leverage their economies of scale?
Yeah, I wanna, I want, it's a great point, I want to look at that, um. We were in a similar situation with, um. Energy procurement, uh, electricity and, and, and natural gas a few years ago, it's probably ten years ago now. And we were able to jump on a contract they had. I did discover that McHenry County has recently decided, their board decided that they are not bidding. Fuel per se anymore, their last, their last contract actually expired in November of twenty twenty-two. But they kept the same terms with the same vendor, again, that same concept, they kept the same terms with it. So, once we get through this, I wanted to sit down, have Perry and I sit down with their procurement person and say. You know, is there a possibility that we could jump on your contract, and if that's the case, um, what, what would that look like? You know, the only concern I have that they may, their vendor may say is, hey, we bring out semis. And, and, and you guys will require straight trucks in there, and hey, you're, you're dropping three hundred, we're gonna have to drop three hundred gallons of fuel. In four different places, rather than. Three thousand gallons of fuel at, at McHenry County DOT's office. So there might be some dip, that might be a scope issue, but it's worth a conversation with them. And they did send us their contact of their vendor is to have a conversation with them, so I want to follow up with that.
Okay, who do they use?
Boy, that escapes me at this point, sorry, Pat, um.
Okay.
We can buy down and share that, and for that, for that.
And do we combine like, uh, some of the other, uh, commodities like DEF and stuff like that with our petroleum people, or do we buy? DEF from somebody else?
I, I.
Yeah, DEF, yeah.
Uh, I, I don't know what DEF is.
Oh, you don't? Okay, it's a, uh, exhaust fluid, diesel exhaust fluid that you use in tier one engines.
Oh, I, I.
You don't have any diesel pickups there or anything that? Oh.
We have, we have the one sixth on the freight binder, that's our only diesel powered, uh, on road vehicle, then we have our tractors and heavy equipment.
Right, but then none of the tractors are heavy equipment, have you, Pat?
I'm aware.
New ones, yeah. Wow, everything we've had for the last ten years, use DEF though. Okay, well, I noticed there was a purchase that turned down at Menards and I was just surprised that, that's. It must have something.
I have, well, there's a lot of receipts in the most.
Yeah.
That might be from L P N R, to be precise, if you have to follow up, I didn't know.
Okay, no problem, but I didn't know if that, uh, I was surprised that they don't have more equipment. Really needs to be updated, I guess.
We can look at that, so I think with the discussion, and I do appreciate, you know, bringing questions forward so we can answer, so I think for the board, it's on the consent agenda. Either the board, you move it off the consent agenda and you vote it up or down, right, and it takes about the bids out there, or the board can choose to reject the bid. And then come up with a different way, but.
Trusty, I, I want to add something too, I was. More or less speaking on behalf of the operations department when it comes to diesel powered vehicles, so. We do have, uh, L P N R has three eighty-four of the F three fifty diesels. But then they have two one tonne diesels, which we are replacing with gasoline, and we're looking to do the same with, uh, the three F three fifties. Does really the same problem.
Go back to gas.
Turbos, yes.
Yeah.
Cause we're not getting the runtime on them, or, or, or the mileage.
Sure.
We need that air efficient, and, and the turbos are falling out after about eight, four years.
Also, gas is cheaper than diesel most of the time.
Most of the time, yeah.
Yeah, so. Okay, no, I don't have a problem, I, I think we can leave it on the consent agenda, but I think it's something we want to maybe take a look at, that whole bidding process a little bit more. And or combining it with like race adjusted maybe.
I, I, I hope we get a positive response from the county because if we do, then we could capture every company that's available. Cause they're buying a heck of a lot more fuel than we are.
Yeah.
Yeah, and if anyone has a concern, like, cause usually the consent agenda is more of the favorable, it's gonna pass. If there's a way that if someone feels uncomfortable and their vote is gonna be in opposition to it, then if a question come Tuesday night, pull it from the consent.
We can pull it, pull it on separately, sure. Okay. Oh, we can deal with that. Okay. All right, next will be, with your report.
Okay, oh, we're gonna do budget though, for us, oh, we're going through this meeting quickly, yeah. Uh, we're gonna make, we're gonna do the financial planning, uh, for fiscal year twenty twenty-five and our assumptions tonight. And Andy's prepared a presentation and, uh, the information was distributed. We didn't provide a company, cause we don't go into, and everyone had was the sustain the dream, which was our financial planning, which has been our guiding document that we've been using. Um, obviously with our conservation financing focus that we've been working towards. Um, the goal for tonight with the presentation is to have the discussion from staff's perspective, we've put together some assumptions. We want to have a conversation with the board, that you concur with those assumptions, and if not, what are the assumptions collectively that we should be operating under? And then from there, um, we will go back and, and build the budget and start working on that, staff will get the direction. Um, obviously, we're just at the very, as you know, the very beginning of the process. September, we would bring a levy board, and, uh, that would be something that we're required to do by statute, so we will have that levy. And then you will see a draft of the budget in November, um, the first review. The tentative, which will be in January. Uh, so there's a sign of the very early beginning, and then also in September, we will have our capital asset management plan, natural capital, those for bigger projects that are not out of the general fund. And we'll be able to lay that out for you. But Andy's gonna take us through all the details of the assumptions and our levy process.
Well, I think a little bit of touch, we all live in the doctor. Um, but one of the big ones, we wanted to get a handle, what we want to do for this year's levy, property tax levy. That's gonna have to be issued by September period. Um, the employee wage cost increase, so there's some assumptions there, we want to have some discussion about. W H R pending study, capital spending, determine, uh, use of reserves. And all of this, you know, really is based on a package I sent out a few weeks ago, so it's following that pretty closely with a couple changes. Um, and then we'll look at, uh, simple financial projections like we do every year, taking that twenty-five assumptions and rolling forward through twenty-seven. Or just to see what those impacts are, the assumptions we have today, but what that's gonna mean going forward, because they have impacts beyond the first year. So looking at the revenues, this shows the general fund, and that's what we're talking about today, distributing the revenues. Um, property taxes make up seventy-nine percent of revenue. That's the first time that I can remember for sure in the last decade that the property tax, uh, percentage has fallen below eighty percent. Uh, farm leases is the next biggest one at eight percent, uh, a couple of years ago, that was twelve, so collectively, those two have always been eighty-three, eighty-five or above. Uh, but now together, they don't even make ninety percent, so that is one place we've seen a little bit of movement. This shows that same distribution by year, and so as you look at those colors, they're pretty similar, but as you get in the last three years on the right. You can see the yellow bar, that's estate personal property replacement tax is starting to grow, we'll talk about that. Um, the farm lease income down a little bit, and property tax revenue down a little bit, it's percent of the whole, um, investment income. And, uh, other program fees and revenues are kind of making up that difference. So looking at the big one, we'll start with the property taxes. This shows the district's general fund tax levels for the last twelve years. Um, and you can see by those green bars, there's only three years of the districts taking the full property tax levy over the last eleven year period. Um, the bar that's green of this year, two thousand and eighteen, has a right around it. So we did take the full levy that year, but in the next year, in nineteen, we actually reduced the levy to mitigate that increase, so effectively, there wasn't one. The two bars in fifteen and sixteen, those increases were full, but they were completely mitigated by a reduced debt service levy. So when you took the two together, the total levy actually went down in both of those years, and the only other year. Okay. What? You have here, we had a full increases in twenty-one, there's only one and four tenths of a percent, cause it's easy to average very well. Um. Because of that, as you look at this, it shows the district, what we actually took as a P T L levy versus what we could have taken, had we taken the full, uh, available, the P T L each of those years. You can see we averaged over the last eleven years, only a one point two nine percent increase. Versus what would have been allowed at two point six percent, so less than half of what was available. Um, and in so doing, we gave up eight point eight million dollars in tax revenue. And then, just as importantly, maybe even more importantly, is we've given up one point three million of annual levy capacity. So had we taken everything we could have, this year, we could have had at least one point three million dollars more in tax. So to calculate the twenty-three levy, it starts with the last year's twenty-two, uh, P T L levy. And we have the corporate, which goes into the general fund, the social security levy, which goes into the general fund, and then the separate liability insurance levy, those three together make up our P T L levies. Under P T L, you can grow it by the rate of inflation, which would have been six and a half percent. However, that's limited to no more than five percent, so five's the max. So that five percent of last year's April, eight, six hundred and fifty-six thousand represents an increase of four hundred and thirty-three thousand. Brings that total base levy to nine million. And then we're also allowed a little bit of new development money for the new development accounting, and I'm estimating that at about sixty-six thousand dollars. I say give or take five or six grand, that should be pretty close, we're usually pretty close to that. So collectively, that would be a four, or five point eight percent increase of four hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars. And if you remember, last year, we had about the exact same increase in front of us, five point eight percent. So we are, staff is recommending, as you'll see, we go through the scenarios, and we would take that full levy increase. Um, the next big revenue source is the property leases driven by the farm lease income. This shows the, in the green, the actual revenue the district's gotten year over year for farm leases. Uh, the blue bars is budgeted amount, and then that orange line is the price of December's futures, and that's what drives our farm revenue. Uh, so our farm revenue is driven by, for fiscal year twenty-five, it'll be the December twenty-four futures, the average of that during the month of February twenty-fourth. So the blue line shows the December futures price, December twenty-four corn during, since March of this year, just kind of following along, cause eventually we're gonna have to. You kind of lock in a price for the budgeting. The red one shows March futures, and I just show that because it's a closer approximation in time, it's only about eight months out. Uh, and that's when you're looking at February, summer, that's eight months out, so I always like to see is there a big, uh, discrepancy between the two, and you can see toward the right, they're converging, that's. You know, they, they usually run pretty parallel. And then just do one more graph on that, the blue line. Is from last year, so that's the December twenty-three corn for the whole calendar year of twenty-two. And that first box you see, that's where I set the budget at, that's where we were in time, six dollars a bushel, so that's gonna be built into the budget. And then as you move to the right of that blue line, you can see average five ninety-one. So we actually was driving the contracts this year, this year's revenue is five ninety-one. And then that green line shows where we are today with December twenty-fourth one. Um, and you can see right now, well, actually not right now, but it was in the last week, it was down to five oh nine. So. Obviously, we can't predict it, so we do, just like we, uh, will do for the, uh, levies, we, there's a couple of different scenarios. So in the pack that I sent out last week, we had three, right, and our best scenario was scenario one, we had corn at five seventy-five. Um, that, uh, drove a million dollars in revenue, and at five twenty, it was down to nine hundred and thirty thousand. And then our worst case scenario was scenario three, four seventy-five, went to eight hundred and sixty thousand. So the dark blue line is kind of the moderate, that's kind of what we're thinking the budget would be based on, and that's at that five twenty core. The, you know, the reduction is due not only to the pressure cord going from five ninety-one, it was locked in, to, you know, five twenty. But we've also had to pull out eight hundred acres last year, that used to go into the general fund, it's now separated to take care of the concrete watershed. So those revenues will not recover, the general funds operating, budget going forward. That's everything on that one, general fund revenues, the program feeds in, the first one we have is educational programs. Um, the green bar gives the actual light loose budget, you see that arrow dropping down, that's COVID, so they really fell off. And then as you look at, you know, going forward to fiscal year twenty-one. Um, the green bar took off right away, so they actually started to recover, a lot of that's the, uh, beer festival, a great alcohol beer trailer event, it, um, grossed out forty thousand dollars. But our budget was a little bit more conservative, you know, reluctant to catch up, so the dark blue bar on the right, that's what proposing for the twenty-five fiscal year budget. It's a fifteen percent growth, a fourteen pound a dollar increase. The budget is ninety-five thousand. Um, for the hunting fees, uh, that's just basically what the zones will allow, we increase those zones, that fifty-eight thousand will be what we should get in twenty-four. Um, and that's gonna be what we budgeted for twenty-four to twenty-five. Increase of sixteen percent over fiscal year twenty-four, cause when I built the budget for twenty-four, I wasn't aware of the additional as well as that decision had been made yet. Camping and shelter fees, um, we show it growing by ten percent. Um, and that's just the average of the actual for twenty-two and twenty-three. And of course, anything you see for twenty-four, we see the green actual bar, that's just year to date, so obviously, there's a lot of revenue you have to come in and come and put through your way today. Collectively, that includes revenues, we show a bold growth for the twenty-five budget of fifteen percent, or twenty-seven thousand dollars. Um, investment income, the green bar shows our budgeted interest revenue, and then that gray line shows the Fed funds rate. And, you know, basically, we show an increase in, it's kind of varying, I mean, two, up to, um, up to two hundred and ninety-seven thousand for fiscal year twenty-five. And that's because we have sixty-five percent of our investments, we'll renew during, uh, throughout the, throughout the fiscal year twenty-five. So they're gonna renew at higher rates, because I think our average, uh, weighted average yield investments right now is about three percent. Um, and this will fall off, will come out at much higher rates. And then the big one to talk about is the state personal property replacement tax, so. That stuff came around in nineteen seventy, and when the local governments used to be able to levy a property, a personal property tax that went away, the state can help with this to replace that. We don't really have any input in it, we're just up to the mercy of the state of what they send us, like every other local government. Um, this shows the states. What they actually sent the district by their fiscal years versus what they estimated they would send us by their fiscal years again. So the blue bar is what the state estimated we would get, the green's what we actually got, you can see, um. They, they don't do a very good job of estimating, because they don't really, aren't aware of what they're gonna get, there's a lot of reconciliations going on that we'll talk about, but the big change. Um, if you went at fiscal twenty-two, they, they estimated they would send us two hundred and ninety-three thousand, they sent us five hundred and fifty-nine thousand. The other issue we have with their estimate is their fiscal year runs from July to June. And ours, obviously, is April to March, so if you look at how they don't relax. As of last week, when this packet went out, they had not sent out the estimate for their fiscal year twenty-four yet, right, so their year's already started. They hadn't sent it out yet. They hadn't sent it out yet, and really that estimate only applies to three months of fiscal year twenty-five, it really has more to do with the current year we're in right now, so it doesn't do as much good. Even though it's not that accurate anyway. However, they did come out with an estimate just on Monday, and we'll talk about that. The other reason the state is a difficult time predicting what they're gonna get, and you can talk to any local government, they're all the same predicament. Is that they don't necessarily control the funds unless they come in, so they sit in this personal property replacement tax fund. And those funds are delegated to other needs of the state. This graph was put together by the Illinois Municipal League, and it shows the diversions that are coming out of that PPRT fund. And you can see they're growing, you know, exponentially, to most recently three hundred ninety million dollars that had been diverted from local governments that should have gone to those. And now we're looking at the actual district revenue by our fiscal year in green versus what we budgeted in blue. And you can see, well, there was always been some discrepancy. As that took off in twenty-two, we were way under budget, right, we got four hundred forty-six thousand, we only budgeted one sixty-seven. If you look ahead, when I was developing the budget we're in today, where it says developed in twenty-two. That would have been right now, a year ago in twenty-two, we'd be developing the twenty-four budget, so what I had to work with. Was the fiscal twenty-two actual, four hundred forty-six thousand. And then I was in twenty-three, right, or about forty percent had been collected, so I knew it was gonna be strong again, maybe even more than we got in twenty-two. But I have no confidence in any of it, it all seems very short-term to me, and everyone you talk to feels the same way. So as that year finished, in twenty-three, we actually got six hundred and seventy-three thousand, and that's part of the, one of the big reasons we have all, ended with a large surplus in the fiscal year. So, you know, obviously I didn't know that at the time I built it, so in twenty-four, I built the budget with a three fifty, but now we're budgeting the next year out, twenty-five, so what, where is that gonna go? In May, the state set out a brief summary, it was one paragraph, explaining their annual reconciliation between the funds. And it basically said, expect the PPRT allocation to go down for their fiscal year twenty-four. Right, so again, that's most of this fiscal year. So what we set out in the package for planning purposes, we had three scenarios. The first one was the best case, and that assumed. That the revenue went down five percent from the actual amount we got in fiscal year twenty-three. The moderate one, which is the one we wanted to build the budget on, assumed that it went down ten percent. And then the worst-case scenario was saying it went down twenty-five percent. And then Monday, when we got the, the state actually came out with their estimate, they said it's gonna be, expect a thirty-three percent reduction, they actually give you a number, they say this is how much the conservation district is gonna get. And they showed four hundred fifty thousand dollars, but again, that probably not super accurate, but that now becomes probably the best guess we have. So going forward, I kind of use that now as the new number that I would put in the twenty-five budget, this is four hundred fifty thousand dollars. So while it represents a thirty-three percent reduction from what we actually got in twenty-three, it's still a big increase, it's a twenty, twenty-eight percent increase year-over-year. As we're going from a three hundred fifty thousand up a hundred grand. Putting all those revenues together then, what we had set out showed a six point three percent increase, but now I reduce that state PPR tax. I lose a little bit of interest income when I do that, so that changes the total revenue anticipated for twenty-five, again, assuming we have a full levy increase. To four point seven percent or five hundred thousand dollars. Moving on to the expenditure range. The first thing we'll look at is the other operating, so this is non-personnel and non-capital, and this is just to give you an idea of what that's made up of, these are really. Most of it's pretty much non-discretionary, so if you look at just these lines as a percentage of the total non-operating cost. You have maintenance, equipment supplies, utilities, fuel, property taxes, together, just those lines make up seventy-four percent of the total non-personal cost. And then we had a few more in there, eating contractual services, promotions in PR, legal. Again, collectively, those together make up two point two million dollars of ninety percent of that total other operating. If you go back and look from two thousand and ten, inflation went up thirty-five percent, and we've only allowed the managers to increase those department budgets. By a net amount of one percent, so they've absorbed that other thirty-four percent by reducing budgets, finding ways to be more efficient. In last year's, remember, the board did authorize a seven percent increase in those other operating expenditures. So that went into effect in April the first of this year at the start of the year, but again, remember, that represents inflation from a year and a half ago, two thousand and twenty-one. This graph shows, the green bar shows where our other operating expenses would have been, had they been allowed with the lower inflation, and the blue is where they actually are by budget. And as you can see, you know, in fiscal year twenty-four, this current year, to where they were going back a whole decade, it's basically the same, about. Two point three million, it really hasn't gone at all, that's all for the hard work of staff. There would have been an initial seven hundred thousand dollars, you know, had we grown under CPI, and that's how we mitigate it, not being, not taking a full levy increase, it's a big part of it, it's not all. This shows the inflation by year, and we had those two big years in twenty-one and twenty-two, a seven and a six and a half percent. Now calendar year inflation's down to three percent. And so what we're, would like to consider for the fiscal twenty-five budget is allowing those other operating expenditures in the department budgets to grow by three and a half percent. And that's really picking up inflation of six and a half percent from twenty-two. It won't go into effect until April one of next year, so give me another eight months of inflation on top of where it is today, so it's a pretty moderate increase for those guys to work with. You'd say for all of us to work with. And then on the personnel side. Again, we showed this graph last year, it's the same, when we just looked at the CPI change year-over-years, it's the blue line of two thousand and ten to two thousand and twenty. And the green shows what we gave in general as an economic across-the-board wage increase to staff. And as inflation took off, obviously the wage increases been picked up. And then last year, you know, which started April of this year, the board awarded a four point seven across-the-board. In calendar year twenty-three, we're looking at three percent right now, but again, obviously there's four months left to go. What we put in the package last year, what we liked the board to consider is a four percent across-the-board then, which again, would go into effect, you know, eight months from now, April first, there's additional inflation when we were between all that. And then summarizing, because there's, obviously if you want to see the packet, there's more than just this four percent. So we have the four percent, and then as you know, the board's authorized us to do the compensation study. The last time we did a form was in two thousand and thirteen, so it's long overdue, GovHRC is working on it, we hope to have the results by September, October would be the latest. What we've done is set aside the equivalent of the, you know, total wage budget from twenty-four, grow by one and a half percent. To allow for adjustments that might be needed within that compensation study. Again, it's not to suggest that everybody get a five and a half percent raise, but we may find groups of positions that are six percent, or five percent, or ten percent in the market, it would allow for adjustments there. As you look at the bargaining groups and how they're impacted, the one fifty folks have a me-too language in their contracts, they're gonna fall under whatever we do for everybody else. So they're included in that prior four percent and one and a half percent. The police, as you know, their contract expired, and we're negotiating with them now, the last doctor we extended them included a market adjustment. And if you look at the cost of that to the cost of the entire wages of the district, that represents a six-tenths of one percent increase. So we can add that on. And then we have a half a percent set aside for the four seven, we don't know what the new grades are gonna look like, so I can't say that this half percent's gonna cover it. It may be more, it may be less, it depends on how that grade structure is laid out. Seasonals, we've only worked a three percent increase too, so that can kind of be backed off, since you're not getting the full four percent. So year-over-year, we're showing a six and a half percent wage increase from fiscal year twenty-four to twenty-five. That's how it breaks out to accelerate hourly, hard times seasonal.
Manny, could you back up one more for me?
Yeah.
Well, I'm a snapshot, I'm not, if you want, someone just for a second here. Thank you.
And the police is in that full-time hourly, so that's what drives that up to the seven seventy. Oh, so moving on to the employee health insurance. We joined the intergovernmental, intergovernmental personal benefit co-op in twenty-one. Most recently, we had an eighteen-month rate lock that was at three and a half percent, so it was a really favorable rate increase. The biggest reason we joined IPDC is at the time they were showing average race increases, going back for a decade, they're running five percent for all the memberships in total. They did release their estimated rate increases. And unfortunately, they showed the PPO for us going up ten point three percent, the HMO three point six percent. Those are estimates, the last time around, they did go down a little bit when the actuals came, but they didn't go down, you know. To four or five percent, I would say maybe this gets, might be more to eight or nine percent of the HMO, but we're not currently, we won't see much lower than that, I don't think. But regardless, I took those numbers, that's what I worked with, and I then took those new rates, put everybody in the plan the way they are, costed it out. And then year-over-year, it represents a nine and a half percent increase, and that's net of, obviously, the employee cost share as well. And then as I projected two years forward, I had the insurance rates fixed in with five percent growth for each of those years. That's consistent with what we've done in the past, and we, we know we can get them there if we need to get them there. If revenues don't come in, we have to make choices, then we do what we need to do to control it going. Under the I R O Act, they set that rate, we don't really have anything to do with it, but the last five years, it's been going down substantially. A lot of this due to the investment returns, the other piece of that is we're now well matured in the program, right, we've done it twenty years, so our assets have built up. So it's nice to see that falling under a ten percent contribution rate. That represents a decrease year-over-year, even with the assumed wage cost increase of the eighteen thousand dollars. So likely we have total benefits done going up five point two percent. And then with the wages, that would all collectively, total personnel of six point two percent increase, which is actually pretty similar to last year, but twenty-three. If you look at the total personnel as a percent or a percentage of the total operating expenses. It's, it was moving up, you know, slowly, mostly because that denominator, we weren't taking a levy increase, so we're freezing, right, those non-personal expenses. So anything growth in the numerator was coming out exponentially on top. We, you know, took a five percent levy increase last year, proposing it again, and doing that. You know, you see that that stays pretty stable in those last few columns, it fell in fiscal year twenty-four, and we show a slight uptick then in fiscal year twenty-five. And when we looked at this in the past, very consistent with other agencies, most were in that eighty, eighty-five percent range. So then a summary in whole, total revenues, originally we showed, I guess I already corrected that, so this would be the correct form of the reduced. Personal property replacement tax, a four point seven percent increase. Total expenditures for four capital going up five point six percent. And that drives a net surplus then, again, before capital of forty-six thousand dollars, compared to the current year of one hundred twenty-six thousand dollars. Then, just a few quick things on the capital outlays. The majority of that was the vehicles, so we have seventeen replacements, three hundred eighty-five thousand. Within those replacements, there's nine re-appropriations, they're already in the budget, we're just not gonna get them, so they gotta have to go forward. And there's three additional vehicles to support the lift-in their team, which has been growing for a long time, and the vehicles have not been there to support them. And then we have some other non-vehicle things, only a hundred seventy-eight thousand, so the total vehicle we're costing now is one point two million. I will say, you know, we're barely half into this year, so there certainly will be other things that come up, I don't, I think we got our handle on the vehicles, but as the. Managers start putting pen to paper and building those budgets, we're gonna come back and probably show you some additional capital, I don't think there'll be real major things, but expect to see some. So if we take the total revenues, less the expenditures, we bring that surplus forward to forty-six, four twenty-two in green there. And you subtract out the capital, then we'd see a total budgeted reserve spend of one point one million. First of this current year, we were showing nine hundred sixteen thousand of a reserve spend. And estimating where the reserves might be on four one at the start of the twenty-five fiscal year, six point three million, I back out the reserve spend. We'd be at five point one, the forty-six percent operating ratio. Reserves and operating extended here. So then just a couple of projections. And again, these were largely in the package, so the first one's just looking at three different scenarios for fiscal year twenty-five, it's not going on beyond that. And everything here sticks for all three of them, so it assumes a full levy increase, assumes the non-personal expenditures go up three and a half percent. Interest at five and a quarter, employee insurance is at nine and a half, total wage cost going up six point five, and the one point two million per capital. So the only thing we're changing in the three is we have the best, the moderate, the worst case, the price of corn is going five seventy-five, four seventy-five. Hopefully we don't stay in that role. And then the PPRT was going five percent to twenty-five percent. And again, the green, the five twenty, the ten percent reduction is where we thought the budget would be. So if we roll that forward, in blue, we told, show a operating surplus of, this is the best case again, right, of three hundred thirty thousand. Less the capital you see in tan, then the total reserve spend of nine hundred thousand. And then your reserves would be at fifty-three percent, and there'd be a four million dollar cushion above that minimum sixteen point six percent threshold that we need to maintain. Just have enough liquidity to get through the day. Looking at the moderate case, corn at five twenty, a ten percent reduction in the property replacement tax. That operating surplus falls to two oh seven, and at the end of the day, the reserves are down to fifty-two percent. And I go all the way to the right, and there's a cushion there, about three point nine million, again, all, most of that would be available for the camp needs, which we talked about. And then scenario three was the worst case, that was corn at four seventy-five, the PPRT down by twenty-five percent. Now the operating surplus goes down to fourteen thousand. And the total reserve spend is one point two, and you're down to fifty percent reserves, again, those are still very strong numbers at the end of one year, that, you know, that's how we had to deal with, things would look great. And this last one then is just reducing that PPRT like we talked about, down to the thirty-three percent. Corn at five twenty again, and now you see that operating surplus of forty-six thousand, which we talked about, but you have a total reserves at the end of the day at fifty percent, or three point seven million. So that's about where we think the budget would be, if we have to lock it in a day, we will obviously reassess corn as long as we can. Probably in October, we'll have to kind of shut it down and give something to you guys. And the last couple of slides I have are just driving that budget, this two-way, forward for two more years. And looking at a different levy assumption, so all these assumptions can stay the same. Corn futures, I'm holding at five twenty for each year, just so we don't have too many variables moving around. The PPRT patch, we changed to minus thirty-three, and then I grow it a little bit by inflation, tie to the inflation of above. Wage cost at a six and a half, I have it at four, and four again, but remember, the four would include some type of tenure increase, so it could be just a three percent across the board. If it takes you one percent to adjust other needs, or American's one as well. Boy help, nine and a half, and the thighs we talked about. The general fund capital outlays, the one point two million we know about. Half of that almost is reappropriation, so going forward, we just put in five hundred thousand as a placeholder, which is reasonable, it's not great, but it's, we could survive on that. And then, for these, I'm projecting the reserves forward, I assume three and a half percent of the total operating expenditures aren't expended. If you go back and look over our history, it averages between four and five, so I'm being a little bit more conservative here. And then lastly, the other thing I do is I pull out seven hundred fifty thousand dollars from the general fund reserves, because there are no more camp reserves. So going forward to twenty-five, anything we spend on the camp fund, will have to come from what we've assigned in the general fund. So I'm assuming there's seven hundred fifty thousand dollars each year is gonna get expended for the camp projects, again, just a placeholder. For the sake of time. So those are all casted, the only thing we're changing are these three levy assumptions. So the first one is the one we talked about, it's a full levy increase of five point eight percent. The second one, I went with three point three, it takes the new development, which we think is eight tenths of a percent, and then only taking one half of the five percent allowed for inflation. Which would be two and a half percent, plus eight tenths, we get to the three point three, and the last one, we'll be taking just the new development. And then for the other two years, it's just following inflation, we grow the levy the maximum amount in year two and three, but we're assuming inflation's lower, so naturally you can get us four percent and three and a half percent. So in the first one with the full levy, the box in the blue shows a deficit in twenty-seven of six hundred twenty-four thousand, that includes the capital. A total camp spend from twenty-five to twenty-seven for those three years, seven hundred fifty thousand times three is two point two million dollars. So the total reserve spend in yellow would be, over those three years, would be three point, three million and ninety-eight thousand dollars. So that's all three operating losses, plus three years of camp. So that's all three operating losses, plus three years of camp, add that together, that would be the total spend over those three years. Um, that would reduce the ending, the reserve balance to three million dollars, or as a percentage of operating expenditures, twenty-five percent. Your cushion at the end of twenty-seven over the sixteen percent would be just a million dollars. If you look at, it says the annual spend, I should say annual net spend, so if we take the operating surplus from twenty-seven to six hundred twenty-four thousand dollars, and you add seven hundred fifty thousand, one-year camp time together, that's one point three million. So if you projected this out another year, you would assume the reserves would go down at least another one point three million dollars, so all your sixteen percent would be gone in one more year. And in two more years, all your reserves would be gone. And obviously, we wouldn't let that happen, but that's you know, showing you the picture that we'd be in, we'd have to make significant changes to run it. In scenario two, same assumption, but we reduced the levy to three point two percent. Now by fiscal year twenty-seven in blue, that operating loss has grown to eight hundred fifty-nine thousand. The total reserve spend there in yellow is three point nine million over all three of those years. That would drop the reserves down at the end of twenty-seven to two point four million or twenty percent. And your cushion above the sixteen percent is just four hundred thirty-seven thousand. And now your annual spend is one point six million, right? Um, so within two years, all your reserves will be gone. If you roll that two more years forward, you'd see it depleted completely. The last one, if you just take new development, I'll jump right to the green, you're down to one point six million or fourteen percent, so you've already fallen under that sixteen percent, sixteen percent threshold. And then that res, that spend would be one point nine million, so if you just took this out one more year, all the reserves would be gone, you wouldn't even make it the fullest year with these assumptions. Hence why, you know, when we don't take that full levy increase, it's not just the one-year impacts, that deficit stays with you until you make up the revenue at some point in the future, or you cut that expenditure on the budget. Uh, we're using the reserves as a part of that, obviously.
Any kind of question? Um, you know, based on your experience and and factoring in safety, but maybe looking for a year of growth or two, I mean, what percentage is that reserve, what do you suggest?
So.
What percentage of the reserve do you like to be at, above the sixteen point six?
So prior to us adopting the sustaining a dream plan, twenty-five percent, which is three months.
Okay.
Was was kind of typically the norm, a lot of it depends on how stable are your revenues, right?
Right.
Ours are very safer. We went through COVID, we went through the, you know, major two thousand eight or nine time recession. Those revenues didn't change, the fire relief revenue came in, property tax revenue came in, just as predicted. So from that aspect, we have about as low of risk to those revenues as you could have. So then it comes down to, you know, from liquidity, cash flow, what can we work with? And as we researched it, we're, you know, seeing these things coming to a head, and we start making big changes now, even though there's this major opportunity coming, right, to give an operational increase, or do we use the reserves to support it? So we started looking at it. Can we, you know, can, is there support to go over three months? And and sure enough, the G F O A says there is, and you, you know, and and in fact, two, two months is kind of their minimal, but they, that if you can support it with stable revenue, that that's an okay position to be in. So it's, I don't, you know, if, if, if we did, if we start approaching it and an operational reference approved, none of it matters. If we start approaching and it's not, you gotta put the brakes on the stock. I mean, that's just to sustain us till we figure out how to change the outcome.
So, and a good point, so we talked about different units of government, the opportunity of different revenues that they have coming in. We don't, um, so it is of what we do get or what we plan to do, since so much is property tax driven. Um, we've absorbed, but we do have a lot of deferred maintenance that we are trying to catch up on and properties that are way past due, and there's not only just the tricks of more, but the natural capital. Um, the only way that we fund our camp, um, because we don't have a floating fund or refinancing of sorts is the revenues coming from the donor fund that we're able to build up and to then transfer over to utilize, and I think Andy demonstrated that. So there's been great fiscal control to the board's efforts, understanding the economic climate. But clearly, when you look at year over year intensively, how far back, I mean, we're getting, we've gotten by, right? This is the earth that finds creative ways uh through efficiencies, but that elasticity of sorts, um, I think is key to to really.
Yeah, your scenarios are very well followed up.
Elizabeth, Chris, can I ask a couple of questions here?
Go ahead, Lloyd.
Okay. Um, first one, I, I, it's just a recommendation, I, I think it'd be worthwhile to um, talk to the people at T P L and and just see if they have any concern about asking for the maximum P T L uh levy in the timing of the referendum, if that would have any, any issue. And then secondly, the, on the, on the compensation study, I can understand that that's been done and and we're still looking at it. But do I understand it right that, that those people that need an adjustment wouldn't get their equity adjustment based on market until twenty-five?
Necessarily, we did budget this year some dollars to be able to do, should that be the board's decision to do some mid mid-year adjustments this year, and we would bring that forward and the board could determine that, or we look to next year?
So the thing is, we didn't budget them to the wage line item in twenty-four, right? So even if we implemented some now, that doesn't change the twenty-four budget, it is what it is. We allotted for them within unanticipated expenditures, right? So anything we do this year, it's, it, it won't be reflected in a difference between twenty-four and twenty-five, because twenty-four budget, wages are fixed, it doesn't include anything for the study. We have unanticipated expenditures in case we wanted to do something. Um, so you'd still see the, the six and a half percent if, in fact, these assumptions became a reality.
And my concern was just a morale issue, if they, if they find, you know, a, a person finds out that they're way behind market and they have to wait a couple of years to, to make made whole, that, that could cause us some issues.
It, it, it would, but let me be clear, we do have funding set aside for this year. If the study shows something needs to be done and the board chooses to try and watch to do some of that this year, there's funding available. Um, it would take a budget transfer to move it from unanticipated into the wage line items.
Yeah, but and if we were to do that, that would reduce the one point five that you've got projected for, for year twenty-five.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay. Uh, and then just in summary, I guess, um, or the thing we need to talk about, so what are we going to do with that levy? And you know, this, you have to come, um, owing wage cost increases six and a half percent. So again, I think that can wait until the study comes forward to really get into deep discussion. Going back to the levy, um, if we take five percent or more, we have to have a public hearing that, uh, seven days before the September twenty-six meetings. So we would need to know, you know, some time in front of that enough to make that happen. Also, the other thing to remember, we talked about this almost each year in the last several years. We kind of made it up to the end of February, right? So if the board chose, hey, let's take five or let's take the full, but let's wait and see how some of these things pan out. And if, you know, you decided to, we could do an abatement of some of that in February. Um, it would be very helpful to have a consensus on three and a half percent, because we have to give directives to the managers to start building their budgets. So the sooner we can get that, the better. Um, per the budget timeline, timeline, August twenty-fifth is when those are supposed to go out. Uh, again, to have some consensus for that capital spending of one point two, I put a plus there, because I think there'll be some other add-ons when we actually get that first look at the tentative. And then lastly, again, the same thing, the reserve spend, one point two plus whatever potential add-ons there are from capital. Forgot how much you want to.
Right, well, I think the assumptions, maybe that's the first. Do you prepare with some of the assumptions that we're placing uh to work with, or what, what mode we want the moderate, the midpoint place? And is there concurrence with that, or do you disagree, which is okay?
Yeah, I think the thing I would agree with Lloyd, we should check with, um, Cameron, but.
Keep you on.
P P L, um, to see what that looks like, I think that's going to be a part of that. At least how comfortable I feel accepting that.
Right, so we may not have some of that, we can check, we may not have some of that data input until after you have to extend the levy. But clearly, some information I think we will have based on our conversation before you have to await.
And then the general field.
Yeah, yeah, I think, I think I'm just more looking forward towards.
If we, a levy increase, it has to be under five percent uh before you, or what was it?
If it's five percent or more, then we have to have a public hearing and you have to have a seven-day notification.
Black box.
And the public hearing is not a bad, we used to have it back in the day when your development was hard.
Andy, did I understand it that we could have taken more from the tax levying, we decided on that too? That's, yeah. And I guess, you know, I'm new, but my simple mind, why wouldn't, we want to utilize that and then put it in the reserves? Just in case.
From, from a financial perspective, there isn't one, it really comes down to a public relation and what's the contingency and say, okay.
Yeah, a little history on that would be, uh, basically, there was some people thinking that uh, the district wasn't managing it properly or.
Money efficiently.
Yeah. And we are, I think, the previous, some of the previous boards were trying to compensate for that, that what you would say was the.
I think, you know, when the downturn occurred, two thousand nine, and we had all these properties, I think the board in direction was to be very uh attentive to the community needs and looking to do best practices for efficiency and effectiveness. So they chose, then it got to certain or different units of government were doing things, and I guess we were in a place to follow suit, um, and and therefore, and then too, because of our fund reserves, um, there was a feeling that we were overfunded, which in essence, when you understand the Conservation District Act and our limitations, we were, we did well efficiencies, we were able to operate, and so we kept ending the year better than anticipated through good budget fiscal management. But then that created a narrative, did you need that? And so do you need to draw down reserves? But clearly, we then had to pull back on many different areas, so that's where there's deferred the intent with the referenda of land acquired, improvements to maintain, you know, so it, it becomes complicated, but it's very difficult, I guess, because not every unit of government is they're not the exact cookie cutter saying, there, there are a lot of different nuances.
And then Andy, in terms of, when you had mentioned the investments, is there um a board or group who invested or serves in some type of investments and some type of portfolio philosophy, like sixty, forty bands?
So we used to have a finance committee, it was disbanded. I mean, for five recipients, I mean, a good one.
Well, they do, they want the full board conversation on financial matters versus just a subset of the board.
Yeah, the re, so there is that right now, the reality is, uh, for the, I would say, almost the last decade, there's almost no yield from a high-grade corporate bond, whether or not, or an agency compared with, you can get on a broker's C D. Uh, most of the times when I, and I say once a month, I get them every week, once I have to look at everything. Occasionally, there might be twenty basis points to get into an agency over a C D, but most of the time, a broker C D is ten to twenty basis points of bond, even a corporate bond, which sounds crazy, but it's true. So it's, so everything we have is broker CDs, F D I C insured, it's, there's no risk, and and it's about as high as yield as you can get right now.
So you would like to see some consensus tonight, uh, or Tuesday night, or what, what are we looking for?
Definitely by Tuesday, I mean, tonight, if there's some general feels of everybody's act, that's helpful. By Tuesday, we need to get to action, because the board will not get together unless there's a, a special call meeting between, uh, September meeting, where the levy comes forward, um. And you'll have, as I said, that you'll have the project camp plan, which is more of your capital spending, but we're just kind of allocating a dollar amount that can go down, or obviously we'll process and assure your projects. But really, for tonight, it's the general fund, um, operations.
Okay, is when we say camp, what, is that an acronym, or?
Good question, yes, Capital Asset Management Plan.
Okay.
And, yeah, we, this is having even more confusing.
I, I know I was going to start going into it, I was like, I have so long anyway, I'm just going to skim over it, but I knew. Is there a consensus on that three and a half percent non-personal, so if we can know that that's going to be directed to the managers?
Yeah. Yeah. That would be good. You agree with that?
That's why I get their comment on the levy, I don't, I mean, I always hate to take the middle ground, but um, I do like it, but I don't even see anything wrong with doing a flat line, too, of a four one projected out, too. So the, the scenario two.
Right.
You know, right, right now, it's up and down a little bit, I don't see anything wrong with a flat line over the next three years, too. Like a four point one, but I'd like to see what that looks like, too.
Would that include a four one for twenty for this? Yeah, and it just carried out.
Is it with the development or just? With new development in that number?
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
Lloyd, do you have any comments?
Yeah, just on, on the P T L, I'm, I'm, I guess, I, I do want to hear what T P L has to say about it, but I'm concerned that the five point eight, I, you know, that four point nine sounds a whole lot better to me, we don't have to ask them for anybody. Uh, we, we can, we can state that we didn't, didn't ask for the full amount that we were eligible for. Um, and those are my thoughts, that the, the five point eight is going to cause some issues.
I think if we're going to go with the four point nine, I would prefer Sean to approach it with four point one, so that we don't look like we're skirting them. Meeting, yeah.
Well, so I mean, there's, uh, there's nothing wrong with a, a flat line approach to out years, they're all, stays consistent.
Now, and I know me, this is trying to lock us in on what's going to happen in the next year, with that four, a year twenty-five, so get an idea.
I'm, I'm kind of agreeing with Lloyd. Well, I, I guess from what I'm seeing is we have a consensus of the three point five for the time personnel, I think.
Yeah.
And, uh, apparently decent consensus, I gather, from at least a four point one to a four point nine on these elements. You agree, everybody agree?
I want you. I agree.
I didn't, I didn't hear that, Chris, you said, build, build two models based on four one and four nine, is that what you said?
Uh, yeah, well, we're, yes, we can go after those two models.
Or somewhere in between.
Yeah, right, or somewhere in between, that's the low and the high, I guess.
That sounds good.
Do you want a, a four one for three years and a projection of that, is that?
Yeah, I mean, I could see tomorrow, but, yeah.
Were you going to do it with the four nine, too, or? Because I would be, even though you did four nine, then went out, what would you have four nine on your cross, it seems?
Uh, I don't know, maybe leave it up to you, so you, what we put together with a fiscal year twenty-five, starting at a four nine, and see what you would come out with your suggestions for those out years. Good? Is that, like, something?
Is that something, Andy, just your timing, that we could have available to share, so that next meeting night, we could really discuss that during the meeting while everybody's together? I'm asking if not, but again, still, we can build, we, we have to build awareness in September. But again, it's a direction, we'd like to have that, and and it would be timed at the cow. And then we could go back and then fine tune whatever, you know, but we just, you'll have to have something to present to the board.
Well, we're, yeah, possibly trying to give the managers budgetary guidance right now.
Well, that three and a half, those are, give us what we need for them to get started, so, okay. Okay. Andy?
Thank you, thanks, Andy.
All right, we'll move on to executive. Where it's important.
Okay, just, uh, real quickly, and thank you, John, while we're having conversations, you did quickly through the network here, the county, uh, for their fuel, um, they are using petroleum traders, that's how, so, um, John will follow up and have a contact that conversation with them, but that's who they are using. Uh, they have not been, I believe, on our work, they was unfamiliar for us.
Yeah, they've not been on our, they look like they're out of Indiana.
Um, let's see, what else do I have for you? Landscapes is out, so, uh, this is, uh, hit the mailboxes and programs, so take a look at that and, uh. again, still tickets for Soul Pole Prairie for Soul Jam to support the foundation, the Conservation District and the Environmental Defenders. So I'll just keep plugging that because that's great. I've shared with you before, the very outdoor beer trail is sold out. But for trustees that are interested in the ticket or whatever, let us know and we'll see what we can do and.
What's your date on that?
Maybe September twenty-third, September twenty-third. And
I have my tickets.
You do.
Excellent.
And then we continue with variety of units of local government. We've got several meetings that have been going on. We're just to talk about shared services collaboration. So we'll continue to give you more information once that is complete. And then the DCNL committee, I did give the board the link in the two for that committee on files to review. I think I shared that with you. So I am beginning to prepare just some different examples. We've brought up a lot of good conversations. If we've requested information, those are looking at efficiencies and how we're doing business. And so I'm capturing all of that too. So I will, I will put that out there in that folder if anyone's got. And that's all I have.
Okay. We wanted to discuss on the
Well, yeah, so brief, let me, let me talk about that. So everybody received based on the comments that were made at the July meeting, the staff prepared the report that gave just a general overview of our our bulk purchasing, you know, what we're doing as far as when we're going out specifically shopping local to provide supplies. There's been a follow-up request for some additional information. So we're going to take some, have to gather that and then we'll share that once we have all that information in order. But I appreciate, I appreciate the, the comments and questions and I can answer if there were any particular additional questions from the communication that went out.
Yeah. Did you have any specific?
Just, you know, those.
Yeah.
For so far, this, yeah.
The whole report back.
Yeah, good. Okay. Any other things? So I guess we're about the public comments too?
There still aren't any.
Okay. I guess the emotion do go into the executive session? So then we'll be going to executive back.
We do have to state the reason why.
Yeah, the reason why you want to read.
Oh, okay.
Pursuant to the two. Yeah, this one. Yeah. Great. Most into going executive session pursuant to two C five lease slash purchase of real estate and two C two-one, you have closed session minutes. The opening's meeting act by ILCS one twenty-one ET. Okay, you have the motion. It'll be a second. Okay, Sean's second.
President Dayton?
Yes.
Vice President Everard?
Yes.
Secretary Chris?
Yes.
Tracy Thomas? Yes. Tracy Zimmerman?
Yes.
Tracy Wazork?
Yes.
President Dunn?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to reconvene immediately following that session. And then they'll just be adjourned.
Uh, yes, Vice President Everard.
Yes, here, present.
Secretary Brett?
Yes.
Tracy Wazork?
Present.
President, President Dayton?
Here.
Tracy Zimmerman?
Present.
Tracy Thomas?
Yes.
President Dunn?
Yes.
For all of the founders.
Okay, so now I need a motion to John.
I'll make that motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Ready, second.
Tracy Wazork?
Yes.
Tracy Zimmerman?
Yes.
Tracy Thomas?
Yes.
Secretary Chris?
Yes.
President Dayton?
Yes.
Vice President Everard?
Yes.
And President Dunn?
Yes.
Your turn. We'll gather back on Tuesday night. Good night. Feel better, Lloyd.
Thank you.